The following program is not a New Channels production, and New Channels has no responsibility for the content or opinions expressed therein.
Hello, my name is Terry Reynolds. To the citizens of the city of Fulton, I've been videotaping meetings since January of 1992. My only motive is a firm belief that an informed electorate will make an informed decision at election time that will ultimately benefit us all. Videotapes of all City of Fulton Common Council meetings are available to rent free of charge to the public at Video World. Thank you, my name is Terry Reynolds.
Hey Spencer.
And all that, we release our rights. It's not gonna get any more complicated than the goddamn thing is already.
Okay, we're gonna do the preliminary review of the agenda. On one and two are the public hearing for the two proposals for the city administrator. They've been designated A and B simply for convenience. Proposal A is basically the proposal that I had made for the city administrator, and B was a proposal for the Chamber of Commerce and the ex-mayors. Basic difference simply is the, under A, the council would have the power, along with the mayor, to get rid of the city administrator, and the employees of the city would also have the right to talk to the administrator directly instead of through the department head as set forth in B. Otherwise, the rest of the provisions are basically the same. So, council will vote first on A, if that's rejected, then they will vote on B, and one way or the other, we're gonna have a city administrator. I would hope, although this isn't a public hearing, that we wouldn't have a lot of discussion on these proposals. They're not new, this I think is the third time this has come out before the council. I think the council knows probably as well as anybody does by now what it's all about. Three, there's an informational presentation only on garbage pickup, and John Crook has prepared an analysis of trash pickup, the problems as you can see from the demonstration over on my left, the end of the table, and he will explain that to everybody present.
Mayor, do you want to do that at the end of the agenda? Or you want to?
That doesn't matter to me, do you rather have it at the end? Okay.
I guess we can go through the agenda and then...
All right.
This is under discussion?
Yeah, that's really what it is.
Okay. That'll be two under discussion then. Four are routine bills over $1,000. Anybody have any questions about those? And five is the routine city clerk's report. Six is the request for quotes on city insurance policies. This is another problem we're having with the insurance policies, and could be more, of course, information on that when we read that on the agenda.
Instead of, you know, requesting quotes, could we bid that out? Instead of getting quotes, there's a fine line drawn between quotes and bids.
I think there's a problem on that though.
If we knew ahead of time that that's what the council wanted, we'd have done that. The insurance committee took it under assumption that we were gonna solicit, as we did last year, and tried to make it as fair and equitable as possible, and I think we've done that. And the resolution, when the clerk gets to it, will be self-explanatory, and, you know, open discussion after that, but I'd certainly like to be able to answer any of those questions, because I was involved in that quite extensively. And mayor and I, you and I spoke about it last week on the phone, so...
Yes. Item seven is the reappointment of Luis Fabrizio to the Board of Assessment and Review. Eight is an amendment to the code on traffic to... Is that to put a stop sign up, Joe?
It'd be to install a stop sign on Wall Street at the intersection of Emery for northbound traffic, install a stop sign on Baldwin Ave, intersection of Moore and Drive for eastbound, and install a stop sign on Baldwin Ave at the intersection of Moore and Drive for westbound traffic.
Thank you. Nine is clerk will advertise for a public hearing on the proposed 94 city budget. And ten is to authorize the mayor to sign the release of drilling rights for the Whitewater development, which was, same thing that was done for Hampton Inn, which would mean the city would not have the right to drill there, although the rights to the water underneath would still belong to the city. Under discussion is the self-pay program for medical benefits that we'll be gotten into in more detail. Then following that, the discussion on garbage pickup, and executive session will be the proposed litigation for annexation of River Glen Square, commonly known as Whitewater's or Kmart Plaza.
May I make a comment on that, Your Honor?
Sure.
I call Bob Freeman, and under section 105, 1F of Public Officers' Law, you know, we can go into executive session to discuss that information.
Yeah, well, I understand that. Litigation of that kind is a proper subject for executive session. Are there any additions to the agenda?
Are, there any resolutions drawn up for that executive session item in advance? Are we gonna act on anything?
No, no, no.
No. Okay, I guess we got still about 11 minutes before the meeting is open. Okay, the meeting is open. You want to call the roll, please?
Mayor?
Present.
First ward?
Here.
Second ward?
Here.
Third ward?
Here.
Fourth ward?
Here.
Fifth ward?
Here.
Sixth ward? Six wards absent, Your Honor.
Right, thank you. Item one, please.
This meeting of the council held on October 25th, 1993, city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting on November 16th, 1993, relative to a proposed local law to create the position of city administrator. The hearing is now declared open on proposal number A, which is the mayor's proposal.
Yeah, for the sake for anyone that wasn't here originally when I had explained what was happening, under the proposals for city administrator, proposal A is basically my proposal, and B is the former mayors and the Chamber of Commerce. The only difference between the two is that under A, the council, along with the mayor, would have the power to discharge the administrator. Under B, the mayor would have that power, and he would also serve only during the term of the mayor. Under A, he would serve indefinitely until released by the common council and the mayor. And also, under A, employees would have the right to directly go to the city administrator if they have a problem. Under B, they would have to go through the channels, meaning through the department head first, well, through the department head period. Both proposals, the administrator would have to move, live in the city within 180 days after his appointment. Okay, public meeting is now open. Diana?
Diana Kalida, I like your idea, in the fact that like, right now, we have a lawyer who comes in with each mayor. Whether he's good or not, it doesn't really matter, he goes most always if the next one comes in, doesn't matter if he's done his job or not. I don't know if that's called party affiliation or not, and like you said, if he's a good person, and he's doing his job, he will stay here indefinitely unless not, and I prefer more than one person saying he's no good, and also if, now, there's a lot of department heads that maybe a worker is not happy with, but he's afraid if he goes that department head, he might lose his job. I don't think it's being sneaky going to an administrator and complaining about his job, and possibly having a meeting with the mayor and the department head and the employee who was unhappy. Now, I don't know if that's part of the B or not, I prefer that part and the A part.
No, that's not part of B.
That is on part B too?
No.
It's not.
No.
And if an administrator has to move into Fulton, who's gonna come here to work for two years? I mean, if they've got a home in Baldwin'sville or what have you, and he thinks he's only gonna come here and work for two years, I think you're gonna be kinda limited on your quality of men that are gonna come in here.
That's true.
I mean, that's my opinion. I wouldn't come in here for a possible two years, not if I have to move everything, by the time you get yourself, if you gotta be within 188 days, you're just about gonna get here, and if it doesn't work out, you're on your way out the door again.
Definitely limits your choices, yes.
There's good parts to both of them, I can see probably those parts that I don't understand about the B part, but the part that you've said are parts that I feel are proper.
Yes, well, the idea was to, I thought, originally, to establish a continuity of government with someone who knew what was going on as new administrations came in, and that's the reason why I had...
Probably after you have one. I mean, he's gonna come in here too, the city of Fulton is not gonna know how to work with an administrator, I mean, they gotta learn too, there's gonna be things that are gonna be new to everybody, and he's in a learning process, almost like a new mayor or new council person is too. He's gonna have to get along with what's going on, department heads and complaints of the city, you can have much trouble with the complaints, but they have to adjust to all that stuff, and I think it's kinda hard if you do it just for two years. But that's my opinion on A.
That's true. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from the council? Public hearing is closed on A, okay? Resolution.
Public members of council, tenants have had an opportunity to express their views regarding the proposal, be resolved the local law three of 1993, create the position of city administrator based on proposal A is hereby adopted.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Roll call vote, please.
First ward?
No.
Second ward?
No.
Third ward?
No.
Fourth ward?
No.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion is defeated, Your Honor.
All right, any comment on B? Okay, close the hearing. Oh, yes, Don.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Don Bullard. You said only those people that hadn't spoke about this before, as I understood your statement.
No, I wasn't excluding anybody, I merely said I was hoping that they would...
I would just ask council to strongly consider proposal B and move its adoption.
Thank you. Thank you. Vern?
I'm Vern Drone, and I likewise also ask the council to consider proposal B, thank you.
Hey, I don't mind saying, and I've said it to several people before already, if A didn't pass, I would support B, because I think it's important that we have an administrator one way or the other. Anyone else? Okay, public hearing on proposal B is closed. A resolution, please.
Where's public members of council, and all intents, had an opportunity to express their views regarding the proposal, be resolved the local law number three of 1993 to create the position of city administrator, based on proposal B is hereby adopted.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Roll call vote, please.
First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
No.
Motion is carried, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item two, please.
Resolve the following bills are hereby adopted for payment: Barrett Paving, 250464 for blacktop; Valano Brothers, $3,117 for drain pipe; Parrott Wolf, $1,140 for soil samples; Sonny Crest Inc., $2,239 for catch basins; Aqua, $11,183.18 for water; Babcock Oil, $3,148 for diesel fuel; Swiggle County Solid Waste, $8,151.50 for tipping fees; Northern Batuminus, $19,140; $19,228; $5,750 for blacktop; Northern Aggregates, $3,075 for bank run gravel; Northern Batuminus, $8,681; $7,670; $8,077 for blacktop; Municipal Sales, $1990 for two-day TV rental. The above items are budgeted but are over the $1,000 charter limit, requiring the council's approval.
I'll move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Item three, please. Well, it used to be five, but everything's been renumbered.
Resolve city clerk's report receipts and disbursements for the month of October in the amount of $4,843.56 hereby received, approved, and placed on file.
I'll move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Four, please.
Resolve that the insurance committee be authorized to solicit sealed quotes for the city of Fulton liability insurance policies, said quotes to be received on or before December 14th, 1993, up to 4:00 PM in the city clerk's office located at 141 South First Street in Fulton, New York. Said quote should be for an exact duplication of existing policies, coverages, and deductibles, with an optional quote for a $1 million umbrella policy on the general liability. Quotes for public officials' policy and the police professional policy, said agents should use the 1993 premiums of $7,261 and $19,856 respectively, since those policies do not expire until April 16th and May 29th of 94. Said quote should include a company that is licensed to do business in New York State. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to all prospective agents that were contacted by Alderman James Rice of the insurance committee and that showed an interest to quote, and said resolution will serve as their invitation to quote if they so choose. And be it further resolved that all quotes will be opened at 4:15 PM on December 14th in the council chambers of the municipal building, with the agents who are submitting quotes present, along with the city clerk and any member of the insurance committee. Said quotes will then be referred to the city attorney and the insurance committee for their review and recommendation of award, to be returned to this council at their meeting of December 21st, and be it further resolved that this council reserves the right to reject any and all bids if for any reason they are not in the best interests of the city of Fulton.
I'll move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Five, please. Well, that's, all right, go ahead.
Resolve that the reappointment by Mayor Valet of Luis Fabrizio, 61 West Fifth Street, Fulton, New York, to the Board of Assessment and Review effective immediately and to expire September 30th, 1998 is hereby approved.
I'll move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Six, please.
Resolve that chapter 16552 Schedule 8 of the Vehicle and Traffic Ordinance of the city of Fulton, New York, entitled Stop Intersections be amended to read as follows: Install a stop sign on Wall Street at the intersection of Emery Street for northbound traffic; install a stop sign on Baldwin Ave at the intersection of Moore and Drive for eastbound traffic; install a stop sign on Baldwin Ave at the intersection of Moore and Drive for westbound traffic.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Seven, please.
Resolve the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on December 14th, 1993 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the municipal building Fulton, New York, to consider the proposed 1994 budget of the city of Fulton, New York. Said advertisement should advise senior citizens, handicapped citizens, and their respective organizations that they have an opportunity to be heard, and be it further resolved that the proposed 1994 budget shall be complete and available for public inspection at the office of the city clerk in the municipal building Fulton, New York, during the week prior to said public hearing.
I'll move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Eight, please.
Resolve that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign the release of water drilling rights for the Whitewater's property located on Route 481 and South First Street, Fulton, New York, more particularly described and attached here to.
These are the same rights that were granted to the developers of Hampton Inn, which is the other side of the road, which would release only the drilling rights, it doesn't release any of the water rights underneath the property. It means the city can't go in there and drill on that property for water. The water rights they still have, and can withdraw water, of course, if they wish. Louis, or Phil? Yeah.
I don't understand this, the property Whitewater's sitting on is not Fulton's territory anyway?
No, we have water rights there. We have water rights many places in the adjoining towns, especially in Valley. It's no different than water rights in Great Bear.
Okay, so now where's the state drunk at water, do we still have control over the water, is that right?
Yeah, nobody else can take the water there except Fulton.
Your Honor, this was not on an advanced agenda or anything, and for that purpose, since I just learned about it as we come in here tonight, I'd like to make a motion to table till we can get more information.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Under discussion, item one, please.
I'd like the clerk, please, to present the resolution that we've got drawn up, and then we can discuss it from there, if you could.
Resolve that the self-pay program for medical insurance will terminate as of January 1st, 1994. Be it further resolved that Cobra benefits will be available to the people in the self-pay program for 18 or 36 months, as government dictated, as long as they pay the going premiums for those periods as established by the insurance carrier. Be it further resolved that after the Cobra period is completed, they will be terminated from the plan, and be it further resolved that Medicare-eligible self-pay people will also have Cobra accessibility for a period of 18 months. Be further resolved that city clerk's office notify all self-pay people of their new rates effective immediately, and their rights to continue under Cobra.
The insurance committee, consistent of Alderman Myers, Alderman Halsted, and myself, had discussed this at great length, is to what to do here, is to find ways to cut our costs, and we approached this as the best way to come out of it, and this was the recommendation of the insurance committee. I had sent each of the Aldermen and Mayor, I had sent out a letter to each of you asking if you had any questions to get ahold of either Jimmy or David or I, and we could answer them, and I haven't, you know, really heard back from anybody as to how they wanted to go on this, but this resolution is our recommendation, and we're hoping to move it and the council adopt it.
I think it should be pointed out that the amount of premiums that that group has paid in has exceeded any claims that were paid out.
Certainly, but...
So it's not costing us anything.
Right, but the potential is there if you had one or two catastrophes within the group, that it could really hurt us. Plus, it also should be pointed out that it's more of a moral obligation at this point that we've carried them, it's not something that we've been obligated to do in any way, but to outright terminate them due to that previous moral obligation, I don't think is the right thing to do either. At least this way, they pick up the Cobra benefits for 18 months, they can look around for other coverage, because the premiums are gonna increase. Originally, there was a premium for single coverage, single and spouse, single and child, and then a family premium. We've received notice from upstate that they're only gonna allow for two sectors there being single coverage and family coverage, so the premium is gonna increase quite substantially, and we're liable to lose many people within the group anyhow without doing away with them. I'd like to move the resolution.
I'll second it.
Roll call vote, please. Wait a minute, Phil has a question. Yeah, Phil.
Who exactly is covered under this program? The one he's talking about? Former employees of the city. Retired employees? Right. Aren't they covered by their retirement contracts at the time they retired?
Many of them will be. It's certainly a past practice that was started many years ago, and that's why I couldn't stress enough the moral obligation of the thing, to not discontinue everybody at this point. They do pay a premium, yeah, and that premium is scheduled to increase, which we have to give them the new rates, I don't think they receive the new rates as of yet.
Our insurance is increasing all the time, and we still have to pay...
Yeah, it's always theirs, the people in this class, yep, they're paying in, yep. And as Alderman Myers referenced to, the class as a whole has historically paid more than what we've paid out in claims. So it hasn't been a... So it hasn't been a loser, but the potential exists certainly.
Roll call vote, please.
First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Motion is carried, you're in.
Item two, please. John, I think that's your role.
What I've done...
Just got a lot of discussion about the cost of garbage pickup, what we're generating And I thought I'd put together an analysis to clear up anything, and I want this to be an informative thing. I don't want to suggest anything tonight or vote on anything tonight. I want to present our costs, our revenues, and give us some options to look at from a council standpoint. Either this council or a next council will have to probably make some pretty difficult decisions on garbage pickup. But again, this is meant to be an informative meeting, and I'll start with looking at the expense side. Again, a lot has been bantered about, about what the cost is of our current trash pickup. Included in our cost for trash pickup is labor. That's the biggest portion of it, and twelve people, wages, social security payments, retirement, and medical benefits will come to approximately three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Presently have twelve people assigned predominantly for garbage pickup. Secondly, our tipping fees. These are fees we pay the county to deposit garbage in the landfill. Next, gas for vehicles for the garbage trucks, about seventy-nine hundred dollars. Truck maintenance, approximately sixty-two, sixty-three hundred dollars. It's difficult to get that figure. We know we have twenty-one trucks using maintenance in this account. Four of them are related to trash pickup, and we estimated that to be the cost. Looking at our stickers, we have a cost for stickers. We have to get stickers printed up. Costs us approximately six thousand dollars a year to print these stickers. Lastly, insurance on the vehicles we use for the trash pickup. So a total for trash pickup, as best we can estimate, is about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the taxpayers. Again, we've heard numbers between four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars. I think this is going to be real close to what our actual costs are. And looking at the revenue side, this is the current revenue that we are getting from our sticker collection program. Year-to-date through November twelfth, a city clerk has taken in approximately a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. That's for forty-five weeks. Estimating that for fifty-two weeks, we're coming in with about a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars for the year. In this year's budget, I think it's important to note that we budgeted three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars from our sticker program. So we have quite a shortfall in our budget from sticker revenue. We did that based on what we thought we were going to do last year. Last year, we were estimating, I think, between two twenty-five and two hundred and fifty thousand. We thought if we doubled the price of the stickers, we could get about three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Yes?
I think we figured two to three, someplace in there, per household.
So we have a shortfall. As a matter of fact, last year, our actual revenue was a hundred and sixty-six thousand, so that was less than what we had projected. So by doubling the price of stickers, we're gaining thirty thousand dollars. So what you can see is happening here is we're getting about half the revenue that we anticipated. So it tells us that either half the people are using the program, or people are putting twice as much in a bag, or some combination thereof.
John, if you say double the cost of a sticker, which now is fifty cents, make it a dollar, it's still going to require two stickers per bag?
No, no, no. I'm saying from nineteen ninety-two, it was fifty cents a bag. We made a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. In nineteen ninety-three, it's a dollar a bag. We doubled the price. We certainly didn't double the revenue.
You're saying doubling the price of the sticker itself, because they don't have new sticker for fifty cents a dollar?
No, no. Our current is a dollar, and we have not generated the revenue that we thought we would.
We got a percentage of the increase of the last year that before the sticker program went into effect on the year cost of tipping fees. When this thing first went into effect, I was led to believe it was to subsidize the coverage of the trash pickup that was not supposed to support the whole program. And what you're telling me is the sticker program is supposed to support the whole trash pickup program, and it wasn't set up that way, Richard?
Well, I think, I know what we've been trying to do here, and previous councils have been trying to make different expenses in the city self-sufficient by instituting a sticker program, at least go in that direction.
Are the vehicle costs as far as maintenance and insurance, are these vehicles used strictly for garbage pickup, or are they... they use it for nothing else?
What do you use a garbage packer for, other than garbage?
A garbage packer, but is that the only piece of equipment they cost them?
Well, I think there's some trucks. I said predominantly. There may be some other use, but I know it's predominantly for... I believe it's two.
Yeah, we use two bags of garbage, one packer, one dump truck of recyclables. We got four vehicles.
Okay, that also covers recyclables, correct?
Yes.
Okay, recyclables, we take out and we give to Oswego County, and we don't get anything in return. Oswego, the City of Oswego gets two percent back, and earlier this year, they went to get four percent back. They thought they should get more. Why can't the City of Fulton approach the landfill and say, "We would like a percent in back," the same as Oswego?
I think that's a good option. When we had a presentation here from a person from Oswego County Recycling, we asked her that question, and I remember her statement was that the municipalities were not getting anything back. I don't know about Oswego.
Oswego does get two percent back, and they tried, they went to four percent. Is that right, Buckland?
No.
Earlier this year, I know they approached the landfill and Oswego County said, "We'd like four percent rather than two percent kickback on our recyclables."
John?
Can I say something?
Yes.
The pickup residential and commercial waste, that's all done by private haulers, okay? Butler's disposal, Layton Law Waste Systems, and Waste Management, Aferis, they pick up all the households and commercial stocks in the City of Oswego. They do not have municipal pickup like we do here in the City of Fulton.
How much do we pick up?
You'd have to turn that question over to Buck.
Most of the businesses we pick up down in this downtown area, but we don't pick up any industry.
John, I also heard Oswego does get a certain percentage back. If they are picked up by private haulers, where is the municipality getting a return on the recyclables?
That must be an ordinance.
Yes, ordinance. I don't understand the ordinance where you're requiring a...
I make sure that that happens, John.
Well, I also heard...
I think that's something we should look at, and it certainly can be one of our options to look at if we can do something with recyclables.
I have a question too. When we went into recycling, they had to hire ten people, because I remember the mayor at that time saying they had to hire ten new people to work because of recycling. And I asked her then, if we didn't use the ten people, would they eliminate them? And she said definitely. Are they using all the men that they had to hire to do the recycling? It has to be a layoff, because it's only going to be the women they hired extra for recycling.
I don't know. I think they're all being used to pick up...
Yeah, the reason we're using them is because two years ago, we had a layoff. We lost six to eight people.
How many, how many years ago?
Two years ago. We had a layoff.
How many did you lay off?
They laid off six.
So they did get rid of excess baggage. Okay, just checking.
Yes, sir.
All this revenue we're talking about is that just through the sales of our stickers?
Yes.
So we're talking that you wanted to make last year three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in stickers for a long period of time, that part of our city tax money goes to each one of these departments. Where's that money going to? I mean, over a period of years, we had a free tax, then they figured the tipping fee was getting too expensive, so they introduced a fifty cent a bag to help bring it up to standard. Now you want to pay the whole thing. Where is the money going from the taxes of previous years?
Well, that's going to subsidize it right now.
I just asked. You said you're getting all your money through the stickers.
No, I said the intent was to. If the program costs... let's look at the next page. If the program costs four hundred and fifty thousand dollars and the sticker revenue is a hundred and eighty or a hundred and ninety-two, we have a shortfall, which is being subsidized through taxes right now. We've had complaints, I know, from industry who say, "Why should an industry be paying to subsidize trash pickup at a home? Or why should a business who hires a private hauler be subsidizing for this?" So our intent was that hopefully through a sticker program, we could... it would be a pay-per-use type fee. If you use the pickup, then you paid for the pickup.
When this all got started into pickup for our trash... I want to make sure I say this right. How did you figure on the volume of trash that we're going to be picking up to charge fifty cents a bag and now a dollar? Did somebody take a study and say that we were sending X amount of tonnage per year that we had to pay to? Was that going... was that included in the price of the sticker? And if it was, a lot of this recycling stuff is being picked up for nothing and given away to the landfill. All recyclables being given away for nothing that you're not paying for. So down the years, five years ago, when we figured, I just pick a figure, ten ton for the City of Fulton was all garbage, now we pick up six ton, four of it is recyclable, you're not getting no money out of it. I see you're going to make a loss. But I mean, nobody's bought this up before.
Let me answer part of your question. The estimate on the number of bags to be picked up was based on the number of households in the city, and they allotted, I believe, about two bags a average per household. That's how they arrived at the figures that they thought the stickers would generate. On recyclables, John's already said, that's an option to look at, to get paid for from the county, and I think it's a good idea. We did work it the other way, too, taking the total tonnage, assuming a thirty-gallon bag weighed twenty, twenty-five pounds, whatever, and dividing that into the full tonnage, coming up with a number of individual bags, and that also came up to about fifty cents for the garbage. And I believe the recycling had already started when they had the tipping fee. If I'm not mistaken. So we were just counting on the garbage, not the recyclables. But what they have done since is to add more things that can be recycled. That's why Tammy came in a few months ago and told us about more things are recycled, therefore there's less going in the garbage now.
But he makes a good point. We are still expending labor and gas and vehicle maintenance to pick up the recyclables, and we get nothing for it.
Right. Part of the problem, too, is a lot of people go out to the landfill themselves, pay the fifty dollar a year tipping fee, and take their stuff out there.
Not to get into controversy, but it's going to landfill or not. You're talking about two dollars or two bags per household? I don't know where then numbers come up. I'm a single person in my house. I eat out ninety percent of the time. I'm lucky that if I got a small bag a week. My next-door neighbor's, my mother, she's eighty-three, and she's lucky she has a bag a week. So there, I mean, for a little teeny bag, giving it a dollar was the number one thing. Number two, when they come along and start rejecting on a lot of garbage, and I've gone around the city and seen different rejection places where people are not picking up, and they say, "Well, somebody threw a coffee can in this one here," so they're going to leave the garbage there for another week. This discouraged me, which I go to landfill, and I take, once a month I can go out there for fifty dollars, and I can take out all my recyclables, I can take out all my white goods, anything recyclable is free. And all you do is take in garbage, you got to separate it out there, which is much cheaper than if it was, like he's telling me, two dollars a bag, I'm spending, or two dollars for the week, that's two bags, I would be spending a hundred and four dollars a year. This way here, I go out there for fifty, and it probably costs me ten dollars a year to drive back and forth.
How many people do you think do that?
Well, that's what happened. A lot of them are doing it now. That's why your thing is going down, because so many people have got rejected. I mean, if you get out and listen to the people when they talk, "Why didn't they pick up my garbage today? I've been out there and I sorted through it, and one time they said they didn't have the proper money on it. They put another sticker on, and there still sticks out there." Somebody's going around and making a decision. It is discouraging the people that we're working for. Not that the garbage collectors, I'm sorry, maybe I used the wrong word, sanitation workers are doing a bad job.
Well, you can't blame the DPW because if...
But you got to... He's asking why people are doing these things.
But if they pick up something that does have trash or recyclables in it that's not supposed to be there, then it'll be rejected at the landfill. So they're only doing their job, and that's what's required, that the recyclables and the trash be separate.
I disagree with you on there. I took some things I overlooked. And they come out and they said, "Well, you know, you should have put that." And I said, "Well, I'm sorry." They don't say, "No, you take it all out." They'll let you dump it through. I have actually seen it done, because my mother's eighty-three years old. I see her something out there, and I took it out of hers, but yet I've seen twice since we used to do that, that she got rejected. Now, some people don't do it on purpose.
Guess you're one of the lucky ones.
Yes, I am. I'm very lucky to have a mother that old. I'm saying we got a lot of senior citizens this town doing...
I know they rejected me, so that's why I say you're one of the lucky ones.
See? But I mean, I'm not here to make jokes at it. We're trying to straighten some out that we're going to be spending lots of money over. And we're already trying to figure out whatever happened to money five years ago that was all in taxes, and now we keep revenue and jumping it up.
Oh, that's easy to account for. Our expenses have exceeded the income. That's where it all went.
The revenue side of the ledger is where our problem really is. Our expenses haven't gone up that drastically. It's that our revenues are going in the other direction. So that's why councils are trying to find ways to create revenue, pay-per-use type things, where if you use a service, you pay for it. Ron?
John, how about the size of the bag? Maybe you should sell bags rather than stickers and limit the size of the bag. And therefore, everyone would be putting the same amount in there.
I think we're...
Stuck in the bag. Fifty gallons, stuff it two or three bags into a fifty-gallon bag.
I have some information here from Cortland, Ithaca, and Watertown, and they don't sell stickers, they sell bags. If you look at what Watertown does, they'll sell you a three-dollar bag, and that takes forty pounds. They'll sell you a twenty-pound bag for two dollars. Okay, now, our bags here, two dollars for one bag. This is in the City of Watertown. Our bags here are about, what, thirty-gallon bags, and we sell them for a dollar, or the sticker that would go on that bag. Cortland sells thirty-gallon bag for two dollars. Ithaca sells tags. I guess they're similar to us. Thirty-five-pound bag, the tag will cost you three dollars to put out to the curb. So if you're putting two bags out... So if you're putting two bags out, you're spending six dollars. Here in Fulton, you put two bags out, you're spending two dollars. Liverpool is probably the closest to us, theirs is a dollar and a half for a thirty gallon bag.
Right.
And it's interesting to note that the city of Cortland, Ithaca, and Liverpool are all running in the red on their, on their trash pickup programs. So, the cost of putting more stickers, uh, they're still running in, in the red.
Another thing, too, that, uh, you may not realize, a lot of places, including a town where my son lives, will not pick up leaves or, uh, wood of any kind, or a construction debris.
Yes.
Why don't the higher garbage pickup people part-time? So they don't have to pay insurance, they don't have to pay labor, uh, any of these benefits. All the factories are doing it, then you pay a minimum wage.
I think, I think the, the garbage, uh, collectors are gainfully employed throughout the week, uh, picking up trash each day.
Like they do, and it don't cost that much.
Well, they're working full-time.
Yeah, they're working full-time to do this. They're working full-time to, to do this. It takes them eight hours a day to, to pick up the trash. If somebody's working eight hours a day, I, I don't think you can hire a, a part-time person to, to do that each day of the week. Why don't we get into some of the options, because we're, we're talking about them now, and there's some options that, uh, the committee that I worked on thought up, uh, and if there's others, uh, we, we can bring them up, and, and they'd be good things to think about. We, we came up with, with five options, and I'll talk a little bit about each one of them. First one is to keep the present sticker program. And put the, put the balance that we're coming in a deficit through an increase in taxes, which is basically if we do nothing, change nothing, that's what would have to happen. And, uh, we estimated that if we had to, uh, cover that two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, which we're going to have to do as a city, that we would, we would have to increase everybody's taxes about fifty dollars a year to cover that. Plus, keep the sticker program. It's about five dollars for every, every hundred thousand, so that's two and a half times five, times the average assessment we're figuring is, uh, thirty-five hundred. Yes, that would be to the taxpayer, I think it comes out to about forty-seven dollars. I said fifty. Uh, we could increase the sticker price. Again, what we, what we have found is more people are going to go get the fifty dollar sticker. Uh, if we doubled the price of the stickers, you know, it's anybody's guess what, what the revenue would be. But if you look at, thinking about that logically, uh, people in other towns, Cortland, Ithaca, Watertown, Liverpool, they're trying that, and they're still in the red. So, is that a viable option? Uh, eliminate stickers and, and impose a, a trash fee. I know that was something that, uh, initially when the sticker program came about, that the council wrestled with. We figured that, based on the cost of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if we, considering four thousand households in the city, that would be, um, every single family unit, two for a two-family, three for a, a three-family, that there's about four thousand units in the city, that we would have to impose a trash fee of one hundred and thirteen dollars a year.
But that's, that's where that number would start, because you're taking your tipping fees, and they are now on four hundred and fifty thousand, twenty-six. Well, you do away with stickers, and everybody puts everything out to the road, certainly your tipping fees are going to-
It may be slightly higher. You're right. Right now, our tonnage is down, uh, because we have less going to the landfill, because people are bringing it themselves. But this would be just an initial starting point to get us close to our expenses.
This is, this is a utility fee, see what you're doing now here. People don't want to go with additional tax, I understand it, taxes are bad enough. But, they don't realize that paying the sticker fees, or an outside hauler, or, uh, additional fees such as you've got set up here, is a utility fee. If it goes back on the taxes, and it's part of the tax roll, they, at the end of the year, they get deducted, they get some of it back. As a fee, as a setup, the same way with the sewage program, as a fee, a utility fee, you cannot deduct it at the end of the year. Your business is getting deducted, because that's how they operate. The homeowner does not get deducted a fee. It's a tax without representation, that's what I've been saying about the whole system since it was initiated.
It's an option. It's an option to do, uh, as far as a cost. You know, you're looking at what we're paying here, if we increase taxes, I'm saying we're going to add forty-seven dollars to, to everybody's taxes. The stickers, if you put two bags out a week, it's going to cost you a hundred dollars a year in stickers, plus an additional forty-seven. Well, I'm not so sure you can't do what you're suggesting here, something that, that needs to be looked at further.
All I asked for when you initiated this program was to take the residents and the taxpayers in this city into consideration, and try to work out a situation where they were going to get taxed, or they were going to pay a fee, where they could at least deduct it as a resident and taxpayer in the city. And nobody ever brought that up to the people of this city.
The only problem with that, Phil, is the only people that can deduct it are those that itemize their deductions. And the great majority of people do not itemize deductions. Plus, the thing John pointed out is you're forcing industry, who all takes care of their own trash removal privately, paying a tax for removing trash for residential. And we have enough problems with taxes, with the industry right now, with the actions that they've brought and are bringing to reduce their tax base. They don't like it.
Yes.
Two hundred and thirteen dollars fee, a high for the collective.
Again, it's something, you know, this is, this is a proposal, you know, people have said, put it on the water bill, I, I don't particularly like that idea. I've heard that on our ta- on your, uh, on your tax bill, there's room to put it on your regular tax bill. There's a, there's a line available to put trash pickup fee, and it will go right on your regular taxes.
Now you got the landlord thing, you got all relatives. You got to have some way of covering it, because okay, you got a trash bag sitting off the street, the guy comes down with his truck, he doesn't know, this guy paid us a hundred and thirteen dollars, or didn't he?
Well, again- What if, what if somebody doesn't pay their taxes now and is delinquent? How do we know we don't stop them from driving on the roads? Uh, it, there's always going to be, there's always going to be some problem with pick, with collecting.
At least you got something in hand.
Again, this, this is an option, and we're just going through options that we can think of.
Taxes, you got to hold on, stickers, you got to hold, the bags out there are paid for. Your fee is a little worse.
Okay, the next thing we came, we thought about was charge for recyclables. Yes?
I haven't been told that they cost some money to recycle.
I don't know. I don't know that.
They, they use recyclables, you know, in specific markets, in different things like that, depending upon, you know, where the markets are, and different things like that, they do.
You got a product over there expensive, or isn't it?
I mean, I, I wouldn't want to tell you yes or no, you know, I, I could get that information.
Where do the recyclables go from Fulton?
They go to the, the materials resource facility at Bristol Hill landfill.
You give it to them? And then they, were they able to sell it?
They, they, you know, they, they, they sort it out, and plastics go in one area, paper, different things like that, and then, you know, it, it's, it's marketed, and then they sell it to different markets across, across-
And we get nothing for it?
They, they sell it, you know, I mean, there, there are markets.
The revenue, though, has to be reflected in their budget, so it offsets, it offsets your county tax, just as the city stickers would offset your-
This is the third time I've had questions.
At this time, the, the county doesn't plan on raising their fees at, uh, you know, the fifty dollar a year sticker fee. They, they do not plan on raising that.
Let's look at charging for recyclables, uh, as an option. You know, how many, how many bags of, of recyclables does the average person put out a, a week? We thought maybe two, papers, uh, metal, plastics, uh, probably two, two a week. So, that would, that would generate, uh, probably another hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of, worth of revenue, if we charged for recyclables.
We are going to get any back into our revenue, or into our, uh-
I'm not, I'm not saying that I want to do any of these yet, I'm just saying that it's an option.
That would be the least desirable, to charge for something that we're not going to get in benefit of.
Okay, but we, the, the answer to that is we still have people out there that we're paying to pick them up, we're putting gas in those trucks, uh, we're doing maintenance on those trucks, we're paying insurance on those trucks.
Paying a service tax through your front tax, it's very simple.
We also, you know, the people that wash out the cans, they pay, they pay the water department when they wash out the cans. You sit down and figure out how much water was used inside the can, you run scan out three names.
You know, the bottom line, though, Phil, is that one way or the other, you're going to pay for this, through taxes, through a fee, through something. It isn't like you're going to get it done for nothing, you're going to pay for it. What John's trying to present to you are what the options are, and pick an option. I guess it's like, you know, what's going to hurt the least?
Okay, well, let's talk about that. You're talking about eliminating the service and, and getting private haulers in here. Okay? That's what you're saying, if, if, if everybody, if people don't, you said eliminate and take it out yourself, which, okay, it's an option. Let me tell you a little bit about what we found out from, from private haulers. Uh, private hauler, uh, we got two quotes, not really quotes, in talking to them, this is, this is the information they, they told us. We don't have any written quotes or anything. But they said, uh, hauler A said he could do it for about a hundred and eighty dollars a year. Okay? Now, if you look at that, would you rather pay a private hauler a hundred and eighty dollars a year, or pay a hundred and thirteen to have the city pick it up? Uh, in this is a three-bag limit, and recyclables are picked up every other week. Uh, you're going to have some additional costs here. The cost for couches, TVs, those type of items, white goods, is twenty-five dollars per item. The city picks them up for five dollars per item right now.
Down fifty for the trash items, the TV, the couch, the chairs.
So, you're going to have, when, when you look at, at a private hauler, you're going to have probably more than what the city is charging, well, it would be more, plus some more inherent cost of additional items. Hauler B said for trash, two dollars per thirty gallon bag. So that's doubling the price of a, of a sticker.
Plus, they won't pick up leaves.
And, and recyclables, one dollar a bag. So, if you're a person who puts out one bag of, of trash now, and one recyclable, uh, you're paying, you're paying one dollar, or two dollars, well, you're paying one dollar. One bag of trash and one recyclable, you're going to pay one dollar. You do that with, with hauler B, and you're going to pay three dollars. So that, that's basically tripling the amount that you would, that you would be paying.
And they won't pick up yard waste.
Right. So, again, th- these are the options, one thing that I've, I've heard discussed is maybe trying to do something with recyclables. Yes?
As much as I dislike taxes, it seems to me that if the tax wouldn't be so high that it would drop and drive us crazy, at least the city could depend on a set figure, they would know exactly what's coming in. Were these bags and trashes and things, nobody knows, it's an unknown figure. And with the tax, they would know exactly what's coming in, they know exactly how much money is being used, how much is going to be short, or if the taxes just don't keep going up. But I mean, the way you save one hundred and eighty dollars per year, we never go up tax for that much. You said what, forty, forty-seven, what'd you say?
This, this one, this one is forty-seven, plus you'll be spending a hundred dollars probably a year to, to buy stickers. So you'll be spending about a hundred and forty-seven dollars. You still have to buy the stickers here.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't understand.
Either way, one-
How much would you have to raise the taxes over that amount to replace the stickers completely? Let's get back to just picking up the trash.
Right here. About a hundred and thirteen dollars a year. This, this really is, is the cheapest. If you look at here, you pay a hundred and forty-seven dollars a year out of pocket. Uh, here, this is dangerous. Eliminating stickers, we, we can say, if we charged, uh, four thousand households a hundred and thirteen dollars a year, then every bag you put out would be picked up. Uh, you wouldn't, probably wouldn't see trash all over the city, uh, because people are hoarding it and, and whatever, and Steve Lund, instead of inspecting buildings, is, is going around inspecting, uh, where people are dumping their trash. Uh, charge for recyclables, uh, didn't seem like a real popular one. And then, uh, eliminating, eliminating the service and going to private haulers, again, is more of an expense than, than just a flat fee.
That, the total cost of the whole process of, of picking up the, the recyclables and the garbage itself, is that a one hundred and thirteen thousand per household, or for a thousand dollars for such value?
Here, here's the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's these costs. That's the total cost of picking up trash and recycling.
If you weigh a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars per household-
No, a hundred and thirteen dollars.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, a hundred and thirteen thousand, a hundred and thirteen dollars per unit, right?
Yes, per unit.
Not assessed valuation, just per-
No, per unit, we're looking at units now. If you have four apartments in a house, you have to multiply that times four. Yes, Anne?
I think it was Jimmy Rice that pointed out that under option three, which is eliminating the stickers, that, um, one of the assumptions, or one of the things we don't know about is how much more, um, stuff would have to be, get hauled out to Bristol Hill, because people won't do it themselves.
Okay.
The only way you could, uh, would be to put a bag limit on-
May, maybe that's it. What we're, what we're experiencing right now is ninety-eight thousand, ninety-nine thousand dollars in tipping fees. Uh, this is the first full year, last year in ninety-two, it started in April. I think the estimate from last year's would be, if we did it a full year, would be about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in tipping fees. So it is, we are experiencing some savings here, because people are bringing them out themselves, but not enough to offset, uh, the cost of the program. Yes, this-
Wait, if you have a private hauler come in, would you eliminate four hundred and fifty thousand dollars automatically? So a private hauler's cost is a hundred and eighty minus four hundred and fifty thousand, divided by a household, that's a hundred and thirteen dollars a household. So now it'll only be costing me sixty-seven dollars a month, because that'd be eliminated right there. You eliminate all the trucks, all the-
Some of the guys driving garbage trucks drives no cars. It's not a way of, you know- It's, it's not a way of, you know.
Well, first of all, if you, if you eliminate people, the first year you have to pay unemployment, which I think we estimated would be, yeah.
John.
I have to think about that.
Don's been trying to get your attention.
John, if you, if you spread the four fifty over the whole tax rate, we could have a assessment of three thousand dollars. Your only target is seventy-one dollars on average, home owner for a year if you eliminate the stickers.
Actually, I, I think that the tax increase is, is the cheapest way to go. Plus, you maintain all of your present services, including leaf pickup and yard waste. Plus, you have that personnel available for other duties in the city like paving and so on. Uh, if you want to look at the cheapest way to go with the most service, that's the way. I, I mean, I'm not too crazy about that idea, but, I mean, those, those are the facts. Don?
Mayor, mayor, the, you would do it based on average assessment of three thousand dollars for about seventy dollars. For the household. And then I'd go out and charge more for your white.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Five dollars for a water heater or refrigerator. But the average homeowner would only, only be paying seventy, seventy-five dollars a year. We need to make it convenient for people to, to throw, to discard the trash, to get rid of it, which is going to create, which is going to clean up a lot of the litter that exists in our city.
I agree. Then we wouldn't have bags in the street, wouldn't have rejection.
Seventy-five dollars a ton.
No, I agree, yes. But I, I think that for the large white goods, probably a higher fee would be warranted.
I know, and seriously, on construction, on construction items like that, when you do demolition or something like that, you call the city, make arrangements, they come in, they pick it up for a flat fee per ton. So, you know, if you have construction materials for a big item or something like that, if you call down to the, the, uh, sergeant D W and you say, okay, I have, uh, construction materials up here, I, we need a truck or something like that, they say, okay, we're going to charge fifty-five dollars a ton or something like that. There's no reason to whirl up and set, set something like that on top of this, which would cover the additional cost.
Yeah, and I, I think, I think you're a good idea, Phil, and things like, uh, large, uh, amounts of yard waste, you know, like somebody takes a tree down or something, could do the same.
Everybody's not going to like this, but the cheapest way for the city of Fulton is to get out of the garbage business. And I vote for number five because you're going to save yourself a half a million dollars.
I think the time is coming, so I'm, but, you know, based on the cost and what people see here, I think people can continue, people are going to do it the cheapest way they can. I think, you know, you're going to put more people out in the dump, or the, you know, all the things you're all, with the workers. I, I have to.
Yeah, but those figures that John's quoted is, is much higher than a tax increase, plus they don't pick up everything. And they, they limit what they pick up.
With the tax increase, though, again, you're, you're going back to your industries. You mentioned earlier, America, continuing to file for reductions in their assessments and all. And our industries, and New York State is, is a hard state to compete in. I mean, we don't have to tell Nestle's or Seal, right, or Moral Press or anybody. That Moral Press has a plant in Tennessee that, if they consolidated operations, they, they could be down there in a couple of weeks.
But if you do number three, you're not taxing industry.
But number three is, I still say is an unknown because you're going to start out at what we're doing now and.
It, it will increase, it won't stay that way forever, that's for sure. I mean, as, as soon as we, uh, negotiate a contract and give somebody a wage increase, that has to go up. Okay, firstly. Yes?
Talk about protecting the industries. What if we did away with the sales tax, what would happen to the industries? I always felt this way, that the three percent collected by the city on the sales tax is a benefit to the industry because they do not pay a sales tax. It's a great benefit, about forty percent greater than taxes.
Okay, uh, I guess, yeah, Ann?
I think that, you know, either number five or number three seem to make the most sense. And one of the reasons I like number three is that it means that everybody's trash is going to get picked up. And right now, we do have an issue that some people choose not to spend a dollar to put a sticker on their bag. And so, people just, you know, put their trash out on the street, or they drop it down by the riverbanks or whatever, or they put it in basements of houses. And I think that, you know, if we went to number three where your trash fee was ending up on your tax bill or your landlord's tax bill, you know, that definitely everyone's trash would be getting picked up. And it would make our city a more attractive place.
Again, this is not an easy issue. There's a lot of pros and cons to, to every, every one of these. And, um, you know, a council, either this council or a next council, will, will have to make a decision on what we want to do because. Again, we're, we're looking to make this up someplace. And it's either going to be in one of those options or, or some other option that, that somebody comes up with.
John, I know this is one thing, you're creating a rock in a hard place. I did sit on the council when we first picked up the, or heading into recycling. We were the pilot for the, the county, the Swigel. In fact, we probably introduced the recycling program throughout the whole county. The hundred and thirteen dollars is probably more exclusive to all peoples involved because you've got to look at, if you do away with all trash, garbage, recyclable pickup, now you put the burden on, on the homeowner for the people that are on a fixed due. And we always thought that in mind, had people who are on a required amount of money, and they couldn't afford a private hauler, that's cost. The hundred and thirteen dollar figure, I think, is probably the best way to go. You can do away with your sticker program, you can pick up your revenue, and everybody would be paying their fair share of whatever, you know, the cost. The multiple dwelling would be, you know, handed back through the rent, not through the, you know, through the landlord. And of course, it'd be certainly easier for me to pay a hundred and thirty, and it would be to pay the private hauler, yet I could still go out to landlord fifty dollars a month if I so felt, for a year if I so felt. So, you have to look at all, yes?
Well, and, and that's what we're trying to do here, right? Tony?
We're in a city, we'll put all the garbage on the barge, we'll set it to a swigel. All in favor?
Tony, they don't have trash pickup in a swigel. Ken?
John, you missed a hundred and thirteen dollars on option three. That's based upon an assessment of your home of thirty-five hundred.
No, no, I just, I just did that based on the number of households that we would charge.
Now, if you could charge a hundred and thirteen dollars, there's many people in this city that presently have fifty-dollar stickers. If they're going to give up those fifty-dollar stickers, that dumping fee is going to go up tremendously. That hundred and thirteen dollars is going to have to increase accordingly right off the bat.
No. It, it's not going to, a hundred and thirteen is not going to stay the same. But I don't think you can, I wouldn't think that down the road you could plan on your, on your fifty-dollar sticker staying the same. Nothing stays the same. Yes.
Before we had the stickers, where did money come from for that?
Came out of the general taxes, I would think.
So, the stickers were just supplement or paying the whole thing?
I don't.
They try to cover the tipping fee and the shortfall that we had back in eighty-nine, ninety.
Is there money in the budget now for this? I mean, you put yearly money in the budget for that?
Well, it, it comes in the general tax increase. If, last, let's say last year, we only took in a hundred and sixty thousand dollars and we were budgeting for two hundred thousand or two hundred and twenty-five thousand, that shortfall had to, had to be made up in, in the general tax.
Well, it's actually, there is no shortfall, I mean, if you had money budgeted for part of it and then the sticker revenue.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it has to be made up. Well, but right now, we're in a deficit situation, so we haven't made it all up.
Well, the stickers are this, you cover the whole, the whole thing. Does that take anything off the general budget?
Our city's in a deficit situation right now. We have to have some way to get out of a deficit situation, too.
Let me just make another point, that there's only one fixed cost, and that's option number five. All the others, one through four, are variable, and you don't know what they're going to be.
Right.
Yeah, but Vern.
Well.
That can vary, too. They're, they're not going to.
That's very true, but at least with a fixed cost at this point, I mean, everything that you've talked about, one, two, three, four, are not fixed. You don't know what they are. We are just projecting figures out there for somebody to come out of the air, and you've done a wonderful job, John, believe me. This is the most comprehensive, uh, program I've seen on, on, on garbage pickup and the garbage problem. You know, you have to bite the bullet. And I have a business in the Swigel. I pay, uh, every, um, quarter for garbage pickup, recycle pickup and so forth. And really, it doesn't break anybody's back to do that.
Yeah, but Vern.
I'm saying, you know, I know you're all going to yell at me because, you know, I know.
Well, wait a minute.
Okay.
In your business, you don't have leaves, you don't have yard waste, you don't have white goods, you don't have all those other extra little things that they're going to charge for or not even take.
We're, we're talking about garbage and trash and recyclables. We're not talking about leaves and things like that. That's really, I think, a separate item.
Yeah, but at the present time, that's all picked up by the city.
Oh, I understand that, but there's no reason why you can't separate that out and have.
Could be what?
It's leaves and stuff could be picked up in a more timely manner.
No, I, that's just what I was going to say, Alderman Rice, is that you really have two separate issues here, okay? You have the trash situation, and you have the other situation with the leaves and the white goods and whatever else you want to call it. Let me tell you, in my opinion, the city of Fulton has to get out of the garbage and trash pickup business. You cannot afford it. You can put all kinds of figures up there that you want, Alderman Crook, and like I say, you've done a wonderful job, but I'm really not sure that we can afford, and I know we cannot afford, to, to keep in this business of trash and garbage pickup.
Okay. I, I guess what, what I'm thinking of here, when I, when I say I would prefer three rather than five, is that I'm thinking of out-of-pocket cost right now for the average city resident. I think with three, out-of-pocket cost is less than is number five. And yeah, we're going to have to increase that, but I don't think that a garbage hauler, a private hauler, is going to keep his figures constant either, so. And yeah, mine is a projection, and his is, his is probably a projection also. But I've heard horror stories about, uh, trash haulers coming in and, and lowballing, and then the next year, you're, you're up out of sight. But, you know, again, these are options, and we're just, we're just trying to, trying to present them, and it's something for us to think about. And I guess what, what I'd like everyone to do, if they're watching this program on TV or here tonight, is talk to your aldermen about what you think we should do. Because here, here are, here are the options. Give some feedback to your aldermen about, uh, what you, what you think about the whole situation. Because we have to increase the shortfall someplace.
John, I'd like to just make one statement, and that doesn't make any difference. What number you go, one through five, they are all relative. And if one increases, any of the other four will, would increase also. So, no matter what you do, it's going to be based on what the general increase is through the county level, and you're going to increase it proportionally no matter which program you want to go with. You would naturally want to go with the least expensive to the homeowner.
Something else that could be done is, you could also put it out to bed. I mean, we're talking about individuals going out in their own fathers, but, you know, the city couldn't put it out to bed. So, we would be locked in for, you know, so many years.
Yes?
When we were discussing, we was on, like, panel and the recycling team then, there was a big question about whether we should get on the garbage business net. They had, um, we say, we had private haulers here offering how much they charged. It wasn't a week later, the tipping fee went up, and that young man that was up here, I think it was Butler, was giving his quote, and it was almost triple because the tipping fee had gone up, and his price had gone up so highly. It was horrible for people like.
There's a lot of uncertainty in any of the options.
Trouble with private haulers, though, is, first of all, they only take limited stuff. They don't take leaves, they don't take yard waste, their prices, you're at their mercy. Once you hire private haulers, you lose your personnel, you lose your trucks, you lose your equipment, and from then on, you don't have any options. And they are a monopoly, and they are going to tell you what you're going to pay, and there ain't a damn thing you could do about it.
Okay. One, one last question. I think, I think everybody has the gist of what, what we have here. And again, if, if you want to get back to your aldermen, let them know what you think about these options. Sir?
Last one of these questions. Nobody knew exactly what it was costing the sanitation department to run for the year. Don't we have a city budget for each department? And that'd give us, the general outline would have cost to run the sanitation department for the year. Number two, uh, our mayor, Mr. Vilett, and I heard others, said that we use some of our trucks at other times, so we're paying out three hundred and some odd thousand dollars in labor that was supposed to be for sanitation. How much of this is going for? Maintenance for roads, uh, flowers, and every, so how much of that three hundred thousand could go to another department? I know it's all going to be taxed down. I don't mind paying my taxes, but, but next year, it's going to be like the water. Next year, you got to pay more for sewer, you got to come up with the money. I don't mind, but tell me how much I got to come up with, and don't leave me in the blind, say, it's going to raise. I know it's going to raise. But get us a, get us what, now, this year, when you go out for your tipping fees, you've got a general idea what it's going to cost you to dump your garbage next year. So, when you put that out there, that's what we got to have in. But don't throw ballpark, because today we say a hundred and thirteen dollars, tomorrow we get a figure of a hundred and fifty. I've seen it happen here too often. Get it where we understand what we're after.
Again, that, that's what we're trying to do here.
I'll be ballpark. Get some figures, come back and tell us what we got to have.
This is, this is my best estimate.
Right now in hand, them courts could go up. The county sits down and tries to budget within a mean of a ballpark court, and that can change for activity in the near.
But the city's so different here, also, you only got so much to work with, and if you have to cut more to some place. Then you do, you just can't keep going and spending more money because there is an option here.
Okay, let, let me just say this much about John's figures. They tried to take proportion of cost of, uh, garbage and trash removal relative to the other work D P W does. There's no way you can get a precise figure to do that because these things intermingle. That's the best effort they, John, you might want to know, is, is a, an accountant, and a damn good one. So, that, you know, we're lucky to have his expertise and the efforts of the rest of that committee, and I think they've done a hell of a job. The first time anybody's ever had any figures to work with. But as he says, this is only a presentation to give an opportunity to see what the possible options are. If anybody has any better ideas, fine, but talk it over with your alderman so that either this council or next year's council, the new one, uh, can have something to go by. And let your alderman know what your preferences are and how you feel about it. Howie?
Incoming budget, or if we got some time, or what are you looking to implement to say there's a cost to the increase? I know you're working on a budget right now, and I'm assuming it's going to be for nineteen ninety-four.
We, we really need to look at something now.
Are you, uh, are you going to have a public hearing, I think you're?
Yeah. Make a, make a. I guess I'm waiting to hear from, you know, that we presented this. We have a little bit of time to hear what people think and what, which direction this council would, would like to go in. If we, if we hear, if we hear nothing, we'll probably go with option one, and we'll see it in, in your taxes. Unless we cut some other places.
If you're looking at, at December fifteenth or fourteenth, implement a nineteen ninety-four budget, you need something in place. Sooner you do this, I think it's probably better.
As soon as you do this, I think it'll probably be better. Yeah, I'm saying, you want this in place, I'm hoping to be incorporated within that ninety-four budget. But you're still gonna have a, you know, a... A law in ninety-four, if you don't try to pick up some of this, we're making sure.
Make a decision, but not a lot of time.
See now, we're all over this thing. I'd like to recommend to the council, we, I think, Charles Owen brought it in. I think it was, as far as record-keeping for the council meetings. And I've been talking to Mr. Reynolds over here, and he would like to submit a proposal to the council for thirty-five dollars a meeting for a videotaped record of each council meeting, for which the city would give one copy, there would still be one copy available at Video World. He would retain a master copy. I would suggest that, seeing how we have no minutes of every meeting or anybody keeping track, this would be a good way to do it.
Well, if he submitted a proposal to me, I'll put it on the next council meeting agenda.
Because, I mean, you could get it in the budget if it was considered as a viable solution. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll bring it before the council. Alice?
Yes, I'd like to thank the city for putting up those yellow lights, those new lights. I got one in front of the house today, and it's gorgeous. I can see backyards of five or six houses. I'm not scared anymore. But it was your idea, wasn't it, Jim?
Well, mine and...
And Jorkito.
One few years back.
Yeah, and... Nine or more, five weeks ago.
Yeah, they're great. They're wonderful. You can see everything. You don't have that one little light looks like an old-fashioned candlelight, and I love it. And one comment on the aldermen. I would like to ask them, would you have all voted the same way on that, A, if you were coming back? No, and my reason is because I've always brought up the argument that the only way we have is our, in touch with our aldermen. And when you don't let the alderman in on this, and it's just the mayor and the administrator, that leaves us out, because we can't get through to our aldermen. It's just the mayor and the administrator, so it's two against us. And we used to have you tell us to speak for us when we didn't like something, that the administrator's not good.
I think the owner will still have that opportunity.
Well, not if they put in the way of tax. It's going to be just the mayor and the administrator.
Well, of course, the council always has the option of changing that if they don't think it's working, Alice. Oh, yeah, it's not cast in stone. They can always change it.
Our contact with the city through our alderment, we have to have...
Well, I'm sure that your input would still be kind of... But today, you know, I did wanna say that the city clerk does keep an account of what transpires. I mean, he's not a word-for-word thing, but he does keep a record. It isn't as if there's not at all. The gentleman over there had something he wanted to say.
These are where they're building new additions onto the high school, and they're taking up the parking areas that the students and the teachers used to use. So, all the students are now parking on the streets over in that area. And on Denishe Place, there's curbs over there, and the students are parking, I mean, they're pretty much parking fine, but the road now is less than sixteen feet wide with cars on both sides. The central bus no longer drives down through there during the school hours. When the snow, if you go over there during the winter time, the snow's gonna build up, and that road's probably gonna be down to ten feet wide. And I believe the fire trucks and emergency vehicles right now are gonna have a tough time getting through there.
I'd like to comment if I could. Mayor, I was up in that neighborhood today. Matter of fact, I was riding around with my successor, Jeff Turmidge, who were looking at different things around the neighborhood. I waited for some sort of recommendation to come from traffic as to what to do there, because I've been reluctant to push for any type of legislation, certainly without a recommendation. The administration at the high school promised a temporary parking lot to be built in the first part of October at one end of the high school, and they assured me in September that that would take care of any problem that may exist there.
Upon speaking with the school administration, three, four weeks ago, I called that parking lot been put on hold, which really puts us in an awful predicament over there. The school does not wanna take it upon themselves to dictate as to how many students can drive to school. There is parking available that we have, does they have form to use, and it is being used. But Denishe Place, Broadwell Ever, experiencing quite an overflow that if you were to go over there anymore at eight o'clock, you would find both sides of Denishe Place lined from one end to the other. And there's only, as Mr. Bailey mentioned, there's only about sixteen inches to go straight through. Again, I was over there today and saw for myself. It's a real problem that they created and had put in our lap to attempt to solve. Yeah, you know, they really didn't uphold their end of the deal by providing the temporary parking lot adjacent to the Candy property, which they had purchased. They told me that they purchased that property for that reason, to create temporary parking there, and they've yet to do it.
Yeah, that's like when they built the, what is it, elementary, new elementary school before they had figured out how they were gonna have access to it. And the same thing with the addition here.
I know I've brought this up a couple of different meetings, and, you know, without a recommendation from the traffic department as to how we should act.
Jim? Has Lieutenant Iowa come up with anything yet?
No, not really. He did remove the "do not enter" signs on Chestnut Street, something I wish that we hadn't done. But he said that that would help. His job was to move traffic in and out of the area. That's been done, and...
We were just wondering if...
That certainly doesn't help solve the parking problems that exist, but I guess it's helping the traffic flow.
We were just wondering if having a no parking on one side of the street from, say, seven AM to five PM...
I will let him pick what side of the street it's gonna be. I'm not gonna... I'm not gonna...
I'm not suggesting that...
Yeah.
You propose any legislation?
Yeah, I am not gonna say, you know, one side of the street or the other's gonna be mad at me, is what it's gonna come down to. So, I'm waiting for them to pick the side of the street. What's that, Greg? Yeah.
On one side of the street, so at least a bus can get back through there, a fire truck can get through there, ambulance can get through there. Right now, you can get one car through there at a time. And it's, you know, it's a pretty long street down through there.
If traffic comes up with a viable solution, I'll sure you will move on it, but I...
Wait till something else should be said or done.
I'll check the traffic again and see if they come up with something.
Jim, it took me four attempts to back out of my driveway today.
Yeah, I saw you walking into Mrs.'s...
And you know, I've never been to one of these meetings.
Yeah.
I think it's just such a dangerous... We have people on that street, elderly people, that have ridden that bus, city bus, from day one. He goes by at five-thirty, I'm up at four-thirty, he goes by, I guess, again, around quarter after seven, and then you never see him again. People are backing, back and forth. How much longer do we have to wait? It's a dangerous situation. We have people with health problems, my husband, for instance. An ambulance couldn't have gotten in my house today if they really, really tried.
Listen, this is Billy. This council and the mayor are all aware that the last several weeks and the last several meetings, I brought this up. You can verify it for yourself. I spoke with Lieutenant Iowa to try to come up with some sort of solution there. And, you know, again, I don't know if the blame is in our part of the ballpark. I think that, you know, the high school should take some responsibility here as to...
Between ten-thirty, that's before the lunch bell, and see how we... I can't get out. I have the garbage people every Tuesday, say, "Call the mayor, Mrs. Bailey. Why don't you do something about this? Call the police, Mrs. Bailey." I mean, I can't.
I'll talk to the school superintendent and also put him on notice by letter that they have created a dangerous situation. Tony?
Yeah, it's a passable charge that says we're paying school taxes for the buses. Why can't the kids from now until September use the buses?
Because some students have to work after school.
How many is that, though?
There's a lot of students who work after school. They have, right, most students have...
I mean, the buses are there, and they'll have to suffer like everybody else.
Maybe it's an option, with the amount of parking spaces that are available, the high school ought to issue permits to those kids who do work after school first, and allow that to fill up. Right, but, you know, the high school has to, the administration has to, you know... Seems like they should be able to come up with something.
Maybe they could convert the tennis courts to parking lots.
These people going through, but not to be insulting to you people. But then, when they started this school, did they have to give permits? Building permits and stuff from the city, just like the homeowner? And when it's...
I'm sorry, Mr. Scott, they wanted to make a swap with us that was not within our liking at the time. They presented an alternative, and we kind of rejected it. The mayor was involved in that with me. Yeah. Mayor, there was a part of Chestnut Street, the paper part.
Right.
Well...
No, there wasn't any.
There were discussions that went on, and we were not willing to...
But when they're issuing permits, weren't the same thing issued for everybody else? It was a gentleman's agreement, and they didn't hold up their bargain. So, you go by the laws, and you go over, and just like the laws, if you've gotta create the parking, tell them they got X amount of time, put in their parking lots, and let them go at it. That's, you know, I can't see any hard thing. I know it's gonna create problems for them, because they got enough there, but they created it, let them kill it.
You're right.
That's all you gotta do, is it goes by the law. It's a zoning inspector, they're showing what he's supposed to have.
Yeah, unfortunately, there isn't anything law that says you've gotta provide a certain amount of parking places for a school. That's right. There isn't anything for a school or any other institution of that kind. Anybody else, anything you wanna worry?
You're headed? Nancy Hornet, if it's here.
Yes, Nancy.
In Chicago, that's your book, to bridge up the speed of the Wide Waters situation.
Hi.
Nancy Hornet from Hancock and Estorbrook, representing Wide Waters. Put it on now. Can you hear me? On top? Go on now. Nancy Hornet from Hancock and Estorbrook, representing Wide Waters. As promised, back to give you an update on the annexation. I have a couple copies of the petition. These are copies with signature. They haven't been filed yet, because we're waiting for the three exhibits that have to be included. That's the updated survey. Once that's provided, we'll get the updated legal description, and then the assessor's certification with regard to the assessed valuation of the petitioners. We have that drafted, and we believe the information is correct. But the assessor can't sign it until we have the legal description, because he's got to put the legal description with the map and make sure it's correct. But these have been signed by all of the petitioners. Petitioners are Larry Rowley, Susan Rowley, and Bruce Clark. Larry Rowley and Bruce Clark are as Pierce Drive associates, and then also Wide Waters Pierce Drive associates. The developer is signing as petitioner, even though they're not at this time the owner. They might be the owner in the future, so that during the annexation process, when you went from one owner to the other, you would have always the owner as one of the petitioners. And I did promise to bring these. Now, I also have a map that I can pass out here, and then anyone else can take a look at. We've had a lot of questions from neighbors, some of them in the city and some of them in the town of Bolney, about the boundaries that we're proposing for the annexation. People concerned, I think, about whether their properties or their family's properties were going to be included. I've received a couple of letters from people who don't want to be included. So, I wanted to just make this clear now. The proposed annexation includes only the proposed River Glen Square parcel and a portion of four eighty-one. It doesn't include any of the residences that are but or other commercial properties in the surrounding areas. If those people wanted to be a part of the annexation, they could either join the petition or at a later date during this petition process, add an additional petition. I know this is a difficult map to read, but I'll leave it here for the council, and then afterwards, if someone else wants to take a look at it. And also, I'm not, although I've been here a couple of times, I'm not sure exactly how your process works. It was my understanding that the resolutions that were offered early on did not include discussion. When you offered the resolution with regard to the drilling rights and tabled that, I did not stand up to ask to add the information. I thought I could do that at the end when I came up to explain the petition. What I'd like to do now is ask if you have questions, if I could provide that information for you so that you could go ahead and vote on that question with me, if at all possible. The drilling rights issue has nothing to do with the water. We do not want, nor, I understand, would the city consider releasing its rights to the water under the surface of the property. The need to release the rights to the drilling is because structures, roadways, et cetera, will be built on the property. And right now, there exists a right for the city to come in at any location and drill. And no lender in their right mind is going to give you money to build a road or a Kmart or any other sort of structure if another party, in this case, the city, has a right to come in and say, "You've gotta move that so I can put my drill right here." So, that's all we're asking, is that the drilling rights be released so we can go ahead and finish our financing and complete the construction and open. We don't want to take the water rights at all. The water would remain with the city, and we would have no rights to the water. It would just mean that we could go ahead and develop the property without someone coming later once the property was developed and saying, "You have to move that structure so we can drill here." And that's all that we're asking for this evening, and I would just ask if you would consider that question this evening. And I can answer questions if you have...
Do you have a copy of each one of the council?
I have, I think I have one more. I have four copies right here. I just ran out of the office. I didn't want to wait for the copy machine. But you can have all these and maybe copy them here, or I can send you more tomorrow. I was just leaving the office as they were getting put together. I had to wait for the signature pages to come in. But I'll leave these with you, and maybe you can share, and then someone can make a copy tonight, or I can send you the copies tomorrow. And we do expect to have our exhibits... The surveyor has promised us the survey by the end of this week. And so, as soon as we get that, we can then get our assessor's certificate signed. As soon as we have them, I'll drive up and file it with the town and with the city. And then the time period will start where the joint public hearing has to be noticed and held. And then there would be a public hearing with both municipalities, where the issue of public benefit would be discussed. And then after the public hearing is closed, each municipality would make a determination as to whether the annexation is in the public interest. If both municipalities determine it's in the public interest, then the property will be annexed. Everyone smiles and goes home. If one municipality says it is and the other says it's not, then the annexing municipality, I assume in this case would be the city saying it was in the public interest, would have to sue for annexation. And then there would be a trial. The only issue at the trial would be whether the annexation is in the public interest. All the arguments that the council and the public has brought up in the last several meetings about the sales tax and other issues as to why they want the annexation would be brought in front of the re-judge panel to show that it was in the public interest.
Who are you talking to, people of Aldean?
Talking to the assessors, and that's it. I understand that the town of Aldean is not happy with this, but hasn't decided for sure what they're gonna do about it. I suppose they're gonna wait for the public hearing and, you know, decide at that point whether they wanna go ahead with it or not.
Nancy, how soon after the petition is ready will the public hearing have to be held?
Would be between twenty and forty days after the petition is filed. So, we're looking at filing the petition hopefully before Thanksgiving. And then that gives time for publishing and everything, and hopefully the public hearing in early December, and, you know, members can move along with it.
In your opinion, and within this process, since we have already authorized the eleven thousand gallons, how do you think the court will view that when the annexation comes up, since that was done before the petition for annexation had been filed for?
I'm just trying to understand your question.
Well, I guess would the court look at that and say, "Well, G. City of Fulton..." Well, I guess would, would the court look at that and say, uh, "Well, gee, City Fulton, you know, you already gave the eleven thousand, why do you come back now and, and want what next?"
So why does it need to be annexed?
Right. And, and had we already done it, is it truly in, in the best interest of the city to be able to annex? I mean, is there any possibility that...
The, um, the shopping center needs more than eleven thousand gallons of water and sewer.
Right, right, right.
So in order to complete the shopping center, we've been told, I was here begging a couple months, a month ago or so, for additional sewer and water, and the answer was no, you can have it if you become a part of the city. So that is one of the, one of the definite reasons why, um, it's in the public interest. But what you look at is the interest of the property to be annexed, the interest of the city of Fulton as the annexing municipality and the interest of the town of Bolney as the, um, remaining municipality. So you look, look at the public interest of all three, so...
So the fact that we've already granted eleven thousand, uh, with no annexation, the court won't view that...
No, that won't happen. That, that shouldn't have any impact at all. Um, thank you.
Nancy, can I ask you a question? Would you feel that you would have or the people that you represent would have any problem of us relinquishing the drilling rights to that property to your contingent upon the completion of your filing of the annex papers?
No, we wouldn't have a problem because we definitely aren't gonna file that. No, that, I had hoped to have the papers here with me tonight. What I didn't realize is that the survey that we had was not adequate and when we checked the legal description, it wasn't correct, it didn't include all the property and we had to redo that before we could get the assessor's signature.
I, I don't think the city has a problem relinquishing the drilling rights. I think they do have a problem ensuring that your client actually proceeds in petitions and annexation. And I think they prefer to have a contingency based on releasing, allowing you to get your financing and basing that on a contingency that you do actually file and proceed with, uh, the petition.
I, I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem if you wanted to add in a thirty day time period too, to make sure that we do it within a reasonable time period. Keeps them off, I'm sorry. Uh, I think we'll be able to file within the next four or five days, but that's assuming that we have all the exhibits together, but there certainly is no question we wouldn't be able to file within thirty days. So if you wanted to say the drilling rights are released on the contingency that we file the petition with the town and the city within thirty days of, of the state, I have no problem with that because we're going to do it.
As far as the, the contingency clause is in, she agree?
Sure, no, we have no problem with that at all. Are there any other questions though?
I would only suggest the council let the, uh, water commissioner about giving up those drilling rights.
I was gonna suggest that, but when we did this with a hand in, I talked to Roger Parkinson.
I think we should do it again on this deal. I'd feel a lot more comfortable with it.
My suggestion...
And that's the only one I was from?
Excuse me, Dan, but was this involved in the secret study there? Was there anything on the drilling rights or that? I don't recall.
No, no.
Okay.
My suggestion for those in the back of the room was that the council check with the water commissioner before they give up the drilling rights.
I, I've had a lot of conversations with Roger Parkinson. I think we'd like to do everything we can to avoid at all costs relinquishing any drilling rights, water rights, anything. Apparently years ago in the early nineteen hundreds, uh, City Water Commissioner sorts, that was an arm of the city, um, really obtained a tremendous amount of, um, rights for the city in, in water. And his recommendation is that we do everything we possibly can to retain every right we, we have. However, it becomes a question of, well, development versus, I mean, it becomes an issue. I've, I'm, I'm opposed to relinquishing it, but if it means losing development, then, you know, obviously maybe there should be a, a compromise, but I think you'll find he's, he's reluctant because he'd like to preserve all his rights to the waters possible.
Well, actually, that's what we're doing. By only giving up drilling rights, retaining the water rights, you haven't given up really anything. Uh, Kmart, they've made, or rather, Wide Waters, they've made it very plain, they're going ahead with the development one way or the other anyway. And, uh, I don't think the city would wanna go and survey and move a building to drill because in order to do that, they're gonna have to pay, of course, the cost and the losses to the building and if they drill in the parking lot, then they're gonna have to pay the costs, repairs, the loss of business, the inconvenience and all the rest to, uh, whoever occupies the development. So that, uh, having given up drilling rights doesn't really amount to that much because you still have drilling rights, the adjoining parcels and the water, of course, covers a much larger area than, uh, what Wide Waters developing. That covers a huge area. And if you throw a well adjacent to it, you're still have access to the water without any loss of water. Alice?
If you pass that, couldn't you make it contingent if the, uh, whole area closed up, like we've seen many shopping malls close down? It looks like right now it's a brand new one, but in twenty years from now, who knows? It'll be another ghost town and they'll knock it down. Couldn't you have a contingency that if it did come to that, that the city would regain its...
Or if it was ever abandoned, the city would regain its drilling rights? Yeah, that's a good idea.
Because you never know in the future. I mean, how many shopping malls have already closed down in Syracuse?
No, that's true. Nancy?
Um, the only, it is a good idea. The only problem with that is that the lenders are concerned. In a perfect world, everyone would act reasonably. Um, but in the world that we live in, you know, someone might wanna come in and say, "I'd like to put, I'd like to drill where your parking lot is or, or where your store is" or whatever. And so the lenders are very concerned about the drilling rights. In the event that we abandon the shopping center, there could be a situation, I mean, not that I foresee that happening, it's, it's a good center and, and Wide Waters doesn't do that, they continually upgrade. But in that event, there could be a situation where the lenders still had money owed to them. So they would, I think, be very reluctant to lend the money with that kind of a contingency in there because it, it would put the, um, take it out of their control. The owner could relinquish the rights without the lender having a right to keep it and the lender was the one who still needed to get his money back. That would be, I'm just trying to second guess everything because what I have to do then is go and sell this to the lender's attorney and I could see him coming back to me and saying, "Well, that still doesn't give us enough control." Um, but as the mayor said, there, there really isn't in this particular case a need for the drilling rights on this property because there is surrounding adjacent property where you still have drilling rights. What you really need is the water and we're not asking to keep, to have any rights at all to the water, just to remove the drilling rights. When you get down to the last property that has drilling rights in that area, that's when you, you're gonna be concerned to make sure that you keep those rights. But right now, there's, um, there's adequate area surrounding where there are drilling rights and there's no proposed development. So what we're asking for is to go ahead and release those rights where the city still keeps the right to the water, um, and that doesn't overly encumber our property so that we don't have a problem with the lenders, um, down the road. You know, there's...
Yeah, but by your same concern for the lenders, we have our concern for the city.
Oh, no, I, I understand what you're saying. And, and I guess what I'm saying is, the city council made it very clear to us that they would not be giving up the rights to the water. And so then they determined that they would be able to drill and get to the water without having to drill on our property so that what we're asking them to give up really isn't of importance to the city because they have the right, the ability to get the water anyway without encumbering, um, the development of the property.
Mayor, I respect Ms. Hornick as an attorney, but not as a geologist and I think that the water issue is a significant enough issue the council needs to get advice.
Can we put a moratorium on any drilling out there for fifty years or whatever?
Fifty years?
Why not?
Well, it may not be here in fifty years.
Well, yeah, but I mean, there'd be no drilling by anybody, that's all, and that would be a piece of crap.
By then, the lenders will have their money back.
That's true.
Now...
They use land drilling and they drill for a while, why can't you do that with water?
That's right. They do land drilling and, uh, I've forgotten the figure, but they can do it for hundreds of yards away and they do it routinely in drilling for oil wells at a much greater depth, incidentally, than this aquifer. How much land is involved there in answering?
About twenty-five acres.
Yeah, and an aquifer, that's a drop in the bucket. Anyone else? Anybody wanna bring anything else before the council? Diane?
Are you going, it's kind of early or late now. When you're done with the roads this year, when do you put up again to build more roads, to repair more roads in the city?
On the road of the rest.
I don't mean, they've already been picked already for the roads they want to do, right? Each ward is already applied for the road they want to get taken care of.
For next year?
Yeah, for next year.
I don't think that the incoming council wants to be bound by that.
So the next year will be the time you ask for your roads to be taken care of, for the next council?
I think so, yeah.
Because this year...
I mean, I don't wanna speak for the incoming council and mayor.
But what I mean is this year they've all been, they've already been picked as the ones that are gonna be taken care of.
For next year?
They're all done.
I don't know, you'd have to ask the older one that. They don't tell me, you say. I don't wanna know.
Okay, next year.
Anyone else? Motion to adjourn to executive session.
Do you want to move it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry.
I have questions, I want to take that in.